Again, as we always do, with the pleasure of the flag followed by a moment of silence. Let's do that. And pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which it stands. Under God, indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Okay, I feel like that one was the topic.
Thank you. All right. You have in your packet the minutes of the mayor and council meeting of March 9th, 2020, as well as from the closed meeting of the same date. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes, Mr. President.
I'll second it.
All right, there's been a motion by Mr. Kavachi to approve the minutes of both meetings, seconded by Mr. Dayhoff. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. There's one item on the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Motion for Ms. Gilbert, is there a second?
Second.
Good second from Mr. Kavachi. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and consent calendar is approved. Now it's time for a report from the mayor. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'd just like to take a minute and, you know, discuss the two crises our city and our nation are facing right now due to COVID-19. Obviously, the first is major health crisis, likes of which we've never seen before. The other is an economic crisis. Of course, this is going to have a large economic impact in the decisions we make as a city. And so far, the state and the federal government have made, I think, are absolutely keeping that in mind. But, you know, we took early action. We canceled the Celtic Cantor before people, before it was popular to close things. We shut that down because we were worried, and I'm glad we did. Shortly after that, you know, the governor and the president put executive actions into place that we're following. And our role as a city, now that they're taking the lead on that, is mainly to enforce those executive actions they took. So I think, I think in what that means is we have a lot of people that work for the city that are still, that still have to go to work and still are on the front lines of this. You know, some of those, we always, we always kind of view on the front lines, like our police department. But some, you know, some aren't really viewed as, as people on the front lines. That are at this time, it's our public works department. Our IT department has been a hero in all of this. You know, we've had to make some serious changes to get staff home to be able to, to work from home, not only to protect the health of our staff, which of course was a big factor in that, but also to, to make sure our staff stays healthy enough to be able to keep offering the services that are needed in the city during a time like this. And I think, I think we've taken the necessary action to do so. And, you know, all the departments and everybody, you know, Parks and Rec, they're not usually looked at being on the front lines, but with this, you know, I'd like to say thank you for, for everything. They're, they're out there canceling a bunch of events that they spent months and months, and sometimes, in some cases, a year, planning. And there's a lot, there's a lot happening in the city, and everyone's pulling together. And I think so far, we've done absolutely everything we can, and everyone's done a great job of it. And I just wanted to say thank you. That's it, Mr. President, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we go any further, I just want to note that we have an amendment to the agenda to take up under new business a proposed police mutual aid agreement regarding the Carroll County COVID-19 pandemic 2024. And without objection, we will add that to the agenda under new business. And now we will take reports from standing committees. Mr. Dayhoff, would you like to report from the Arts Council?
Yes, the Arts Council, as, as Mayor Dominic mentioned before, the, some of the, some of the events over at the Arts Council have been canceled. All of the events at the Arts Council have been canceled through March 30th. And if anyone's already purchased tickets for these events, they can contact the Arts Council at 410-848-7272, or they can email them at info@carrollcountyartscouncil.org. If you go to the website, there's some good information on the website. The events are constantly changing and moving, as it is for everyone at the Arts Council, as we work hard to deal with the health emergency caused by COVID-19. The, the Peep Show has been postponed indefinitely, and there's been a great deal of discussion as to how it is that we want to, what it is that we want to do with the Peep Show, because we've heard from, from a lot of folks about the Peep Show. It was just decided just this afternoon to do an online approach to the Peep Show. And according to a release that's on the website, registration for the Peep Show has been reopened, and the online exhibit will run from Friday, April the 17th, through Friday, May the 1st, and it will include voting for audience favorites. So if you go to the website for the Arts Council, you'll find this information and a lot of other information. And that'll be my report for the Arts Council, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Do you have anything from Economic and Community Development?
Yeah, Mr. President, just a few remarks. First off, for every business that is out there listening, I understand these are unprecedented times, large businesses and small businesses. There's a lot of uncertainty out there. And I just want to convey that there are resources for these businesses. The Small Business Development Center, the Department of Commerce, the Carroll County Chamber of Commerce, the Maryland Chamber of Commerce, the Carroll County Technology Council are all putting out information about the government loan packages. So I would encourage all businesses to reach out to those organizations so that you can educate yourself on what the options are. If you need to get in touch with them, feel free to get in touch with me on Facebook, LinkedIn. But I understand this is going to have a huge economic impact nationally, but also locally. Councilman Dayhoff just talked about the, the Peep Show. I mean, that's huge for a lot of people. So I would encourage everybody to support each other. And, you know, we're here for you as a council. I know the city's here for you, but there are resources out there. So please, you know, reach out to us if you need anything and through these uncertain trying times. And that's, that's all that I have to report, Mr. President.
Mr. President, can I add one thing to his report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Along those same lines, I did want to mention that there have been some people locally that have been doing some, some things to help economically and somewhat to help. The, the first one is we do, to help some of the restaurants that have always delivered or always done takeout, but some that, that didn't before. A gentleman by the name of Randy Goldstein, I know a lot of us know him, I know him very well. In fact, he's, he's one of my competitors in the, in the private world, but he, he put up a website called carol eats dot com that has a list. And if you're a restaurant where you're doing takeout, you can go on there and add your, add your business. But if you're looking to see who delivers, who does takeout, what their hours are, this is a good resource. And those people, you know, if you're, if you're going to, if you're going to order out, if you're going to get takeout, obviously proceed with caution. But if you're going to do so, I, you know, I suggest you support the local businesses, and they're the ones that are on there. There's, those are the ones that are the, you know, the Main Street businesses and the downtown businesses that, that need, you know, whatever they can get right now. So I just wanted to make that clear. And one other person, Candace Berger. She, she, so a lot of you know her from, she was on the cover of the Carroll County Times, you know, a few months ago for some, like, big national, international cosplay award. She has been sewing masks and donating them for free to any of the medical facilities in the area that need them. They've been picking them up on her porch. So there's a contact-free delivery system, and she has been sewing those masks by hand and has been supplying them to everyone that's asking. So I just wanted to give her some credit. I know it's not tied to economics, but I left that out earlier in my report. I wanted to say that since I was talking about Carol Eats. And that's it, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the Finance Committee, I'll just report that we are going to work on the budget. We will be holding a budget workshop in a couple of weeks, and we'll keep you informed about our progress on that. Anything else, committee, Ms. Gilbert?
No, I just, the, the mayor already said a great thanks to our IT department, and I also want to extend that for getting all of our folks that can working from home. So a huge thanks to our IT department for that, but no other, nothing else at this time.
Right. Thank you. Mr. Kavachi, Public Safety?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, obviously, our men and women in the police department, as well as the fire department, I'm sure, although I'm not in quite as good a contact with them, are, are working hard. Fortunately, right now, call volume is actually down a pretty fair amount because people, by and large, at least in our community, seem to be doing a good job of mostly staying at home and not, you know, not getting out and doing a lot of stuff in public, which has cut call volume down significantly. I do believe we've seen probably just a slight little uptick, maybe in some domestic calls, from what I understand, but I don't think it's anything specific. Chief, you may want to, you may be able to weigh in on that on your report. But by and large, it's been pretty quiet so far, which is awesome. I hope it stays that way. I suspect as time goes on, we'll see new and different things popping up that our law enforcement community is going to have to deal with. I think we're well positioned with the changes that Chief recently made relative to how we're deploying our police officers in a, in a need basis versus just set shifts. I, I think the timing could not have been better for us to do that. It now gives a lot more flexibility in terms of when we have police officers available in, in, in times when we need them the most. And this new methodology is going to allow us to data analyze as things go on and then make necessary adjustments as needed. And I know we're very fortunate to have a chief that does a lot of data-driven policing. And with a situation like this, I think we're going to have to rely on that to try to figure out how we get to where the puck's going to be versus where it is right now. That's it, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kavachi. Public Works, Mr. Yengling?
Nothing to report, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. And finally, Recreation and Parks, Mr. Dayhoff?
Yeah, sadly, we had to cancel the Celtic Cantor, and, and it looks like we've gone ahead and canceled the Westminster Wine Stroll. And that makes all of us sad because that's a very popular event. We canceled, we closed the, the Fitness Center. We closed the Fitness Center on March the 14th. Let's see, the community room at the pool complex is closed. Special events permits are revoked through April the 30th, and the park pavilion rentals are revoked through April the 30th. So things are changing quickly. Stay tuned to the website for, for current changes. And we appreciate the governor's leadership and the mayor's leadership and the council president's leadership. As things have changed, we've put out press releases. So follow those, and we'll just have to see how things plan out and develop. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. On our agenda, we normally now take council comments and discussion on items that are not otherwise on the agenda or under a committee report. I'll just work down the council as we usually sit. Mr. Dayhoff, anything else you'd like to add?
No, I just want to echo the remarks that have been made earlier. The, the police department's doing a great job. I spent a little time with them yesterday. Father Mark from St. John Catholic Church stopped by and said a prayer and, and blessed the, the police department and the fire department. He traveled through town. It was, it was interesting. The, of course, the, the services were canceled, and they, and they livestreamed services. But Father Mark took that one extra step, and he actually took the, the services out by foot into Westminster. But really appreciate your work, Mr. President, and the work of the mayor. And I think everybody's doing a really good job under very difficult circumstances. In Carroll County and Westminster, we do emergencies response extremely well, and I think that has come through once again. So thanks, everybody, for their hard work. And I really appreciate having the online meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Ms. Gilbert?
Um, yes, not only do I want to echo some of the things that have already been said, but I wanted people to think of a few other things that, in, in the event of what we're, we're experiencing right now, as our community, like many others, deals with the growing coronavirus threat, we all, just as every other community, we remain committed to ensuring the health and safety of our citizens. The elements of health monitoring, social distancing, hand washing, they're the pillars of what every community, including ours, will be using and mentioning constantly that will support the overall efforts that will hold down the spread of, of the coronavirus. However, there are other things that I think I'd love to get out and tell people to think about, being creative and learn and lean on other people. Use your emails, Facebook, the telephone. Check on your neighbors. Engage on kind of some old current email groups. Old current, well, that made a lot of sense. And engage in old or a current email group just to say hello. Take some time to stop by from your porch and wave to your neighbors and engage in porch-to-porch conversation. Particularly, do not forget our homebound older adults. Call and check on them. Offer a store run. If they can't get to the store, make sure they have their groceries. Make sure they might have their medications. Or even just a friendly hello to, for them to just understand that everything's okay and we're all here caring about one another. Keep social distancing in mind as you're doing all that. And I challenge folks to think of positive words and ways to say I care to other people. And just finally, in all this, I know it's going to be difficult, but stay calm. Things will change. We will get back to the way things were. And hopefully, through all this, we will emerge a better city, and we will set an example for other citizens and our future generations. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there amongst everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Kavachi?
Yeah, Mr. President, thank you. I'm not going to reiterate what everyone else has already said. But I will say one thing. I, I do want to compliment our mayor. You know, it's funny, in times like this, you have to have somebody that steps up and takes charge early in a crisis. And we've certainly seen that with our governor. I think he's done an amazing job. I think he's made us really proud to be Marylanders. And what most people don't know is our mayor did the same thing very early on here in the city. Within the first day or two, this really started to become serious. He was communicating, making decisions. And I know that, Mr. President, he was communicating with you as well and all of us. But, but he had to make the decisions. He had to make the calls. He canceled some events, probably a little before it was crystal clear that that needed to happen. But obviously, they were excellent decisions, but at the time, did not seem like, like easy decisions. They, they do now. But that's what a good leader does. He makes those decisions when they need to be made. Sometimes they're tough calls. He made them, and I just wanted to say thank you. He did, he did it. You've done an excellent job, Joe, and I want to give you my compliments.
You're here. All right. Thank you, Mr. Kavachi, and Mr. Yengling?
I just echo everything that the previous council members said. I 100% agree. I'd like to say thank you to the staff for being flexible and through these uncertain times. And, you know, that's all I have, Mr. President.
All right, thank you very much. And I'll just add my personal thanks to the mayor for doing such a great job of keeping in touch with me and communicating and sharing these concerns with me, and I appreciate that very much as well. We'll move on. We have no unfinished business unless there is some that anybody is aware of. Under new business, we have approval of the parking license agreement for the Board of Commissioners and the Carroll County Public Library. Ms. Matthews?
Thank you. As mayor and council are aware, the Carroll County Public Library will soon begin construction on the Exploration Commons at 50 East Main Street project. The library is renovating the 14,000 square foot lower level of the Westminster branch into an interactive community space that will offer a tech-focused makerspace, a professional teaching kitchen, and multiple collaborative workspaces. Our Planning and Zoning Commission considered the site plan for the library expansion on August 8th, 2019. The commission gave its approval of the site plan conditioned upon the parties reaching a parking agreement. That request was actually made by staff to formalize the currently informal parking arrangement with the library that has evolved over many, many years. Like other projects in the city, the library project is subject to the Westminster zoning code, including providing sufficient parking. Obviously, we all recognize the value of having the Westminster branch library located in our downtown, and we certainly are well aware of their insufficient onsite parking as things currently exist. With that in mind, the city offered to allow the library to meet its parking requirements under our zoning ordinance via a license agreement for 77 spaces in the city-owned Longwell Parking Garage. This agreement would need to remain in effect until such time as the library has identified an alternative way to meet its parking obligations under the zoning ordinance, or alternatively, the Westminster branch ceases to operate in downtown Westminster. Included in your agenda packet is a proposed parking space license agreement. As you may note in Section 2, the initial term of the agreement would be 20 years. And during this time period, the city would not charge the library for use of the 77 parking spaces in the Longwell Parking Garage. Renewal of the agreement would be automatic, with the duration of each renewal term being three years. I did want to call to your attention in Section 4 that the city does reserve its right to terminate the agreement after the initial 20-year period, subject to certain conditions, specifically adequate notice being given to both the county and to the library. The Board of Commissioners did approve this agreement at its meeting last Tuesday, and my understanding from the library's executive director that she also has the approval of her board to sign the agreement. So at this time, I recommend that the common council approve the proposed parking space license agreement between the city, Carroll County Government, and the Carroll County Library, and authorize the mayor's execution of the agreement. I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right, thank you, Ms. Matthews. And I should note for those who are watching us on our live stream that Ms. Matthews is the city administrator in the city of Westminster. So we can move into discussion on this. And first, let me just say thank you, Mr. Mayor, for breaking the logjam and getting this, this agreement back on track. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Ms. Matthews?
You want to entertain a motion, and then we can have some discussion?
Very much. Would you like to, if you'd care to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make it. I'll make a motion that we approve the parking space license agreement with the Board of Commissioners and the Carroll County Public Library, as discussed by Ms. Matthews.
All right, there's a motion from Mr. Dayhoff. Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Mr. Kavachi. So any further comments or questions or discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Kavachi?
I'd like to compliment staff. This was a fair amount of back and forth. There's a lot of work that went on in the background related to this. There was clearly, after watching a couple of the commissioners' meetings, some real confusion amongst the county leadership in terms of what this was all about and what we were trying to do. I think it was clear from our side from the beginning, we wanted nothing more than to try to help the library do this project. We, we think it's awesome. I think we're all very supportive of it and are very excited about the Exploration Commons. And I'm glad that the county finally kind of got it together, and we were able to come to an agreement.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Mr. President?
President?
Mr. Dayhoff?
Historically, we've always been a very strong partner with the library, and I'm really glad that we're continuing that strong partnership with the library. And I'm glad we worked it out. I want to thank the mayor. If I'm not mistaken, Councilwoman Anne Gilbert helped out a little bit with that. And I want to thank the staff for persevering and making sure that, even though it's a county facility, we still needed to follow the law. So I'm really happy that we, we came up with this agreement and that we're going to move forward. And I'm really looking forward to seeing the renovations and what they're going to do with the library. I think it's an exciting project.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, did you wish to be heard?
Yes. I just wanted to say that I think this was, I'm glad this ended the way that it did. I know that, like, there definitely was some confusion. And, and I think, I think both sides, and, and, you know, at the heart of it had, had real concerns. I totally understand the county's concern and the library's concern of, of uncertainty in terms of parking availability. But, you know, the whole reason that we have these agreements is to create some kind of certainty for everyone in the parking situation downtown. You know, of course, we would always do everything we can to help the library and make sure the library is, is going to continue to be able to offer the services they do. And they're great services. And look, I think one of the things that our library system's doing better than most is this, this, this makerspace that they're putting in. You know, the way people use libraries is changing. The way people are getting their information is changing. The way people are learning is changing. And you often hear jokes about the way things are changing, and people will, the both of the jokes sometimes will be libraries as being an antiquated form of learning, but not our library. You know, our library is, you know, they're taking steps to, to, to change and to adapt to the way people are learning through experiences. And, you know, we, I, I signed and sent the letter. Of course, it was on behalf of the entire city, and I know every single council person here now and, and the council that was here before totally supported it. But we sent a, a letter in support of some of the grants that they, they are receiving. And this is a big deal, that our library is doing this, and we, we wanted to make it work. And I think that, I think it worked out well. I think everyone kind of came together in the end and figured it out. But I also know that almost everyone in the council, if not everybody, was involved in talking to commissioners and so forth to get this ironed out. But every time we have a five or 10-minute discussion, I know sometimes it creates hours of the work for staff. So I definitely want to thank Ms. Matthews, Ms. Lavine, and, and Mr. Depot. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor of approving the agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay? The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the agreement is approved. And we never get that done, that's terrific. As I said at the outset of the meeting, we've added an additional item under new business, and that is the police mutual aid agreement regarding the Carroll County COVID-19 pandemic 2024. Ms. Matthews, who would you like to have address that issue for us?
I believe Chief Ledwell is probably best positioned to respond to any questions.
All right, Chief, would you like to make any comments about this?
Yes, good evening, mayor and council. This is Tom Ledwell at the Police Department. So the sheriff and the municipal police chiefs had a conference call when the COVID-19 crisis started to unfold, and we were discussing continuity of operations in each of our agencies. And we discussed, should worst-case scenario happen with our staffing levels as far as the COVID-19 disease causing us to go below minimum staffing requirements, that we would have the ability to quickly organize and combine our agencies to provide the necessary police coverage, whether it be in a municipality or out in the county. So it's in that vein, the sheriff has drafted the attached police mutual aid agreement regarding the Carroll County COVID-19 pandemic 2024. And what that would do is a couple of things. It would provide us with the jurisdictional authority to operate outside of our jurisdictional boundaries, the city municipal limits. And it also puts a structure into place so that we could seamlessly operate at the time that something like this would occur. So I'm in support of it, and I would recommend the approval of the agreement in substantially the same form as the attached, the attached document. It's still in draft form. That's it.
All right. And I was just going to note that the version we have before us is still marked draft. So I take it that this is not the final version of this, of this agreement. So would anybody like to? Do they have any questions for the chief or the city administrator or on this?
Well, let's, if it's okay with you, Mr. President, let's do a motion, and, and then maybe we can discuss it for a minute. Is that okay with you?
Certainly.
So I recommend approval, if it's okay. I, I recommend approval of the draft mutual aid agreement regarding the Carroll County COVID-19 pandemic 2024. In substantially... agreement regarding the Carroll County COVID-19 pandemic 2024 in substantially the same form as we have seen it attached in our council packet. But I authorize, I would like to make, include in my motion authorization for the mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the city of Westminster with any minor changes that he and the chiefs see fit, if that's okay with everyone.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
I see there's been a motion, Mr. Dayhoff, and the second was Mr. Yingling, I think?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
I just wanted to say that I think the agreement, it looks pretty good. I think there's just a couple of minor tweaks, and I'm sure everyone's trying to get things done quickly. So they didn't have weeks to put this document together. There's a couple of small things I think we need to change in verbiage, and then, you know, it's good to go. But in, I think in practice and the philosophy behind it, I think we're, I believe we're all in agreement that it's important to pull together and be able to help each other in a situation like this.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anybody else to be heard?
Mr. President.
Mr. Kavachi.
So unfortunately, I did not get a chance to read this. I didn't realize it had been sent until I looked at my email and sat down for this meeting. So I have not actually read it. But I trust the chief and know that, I'm sure that it's the right thing, and I think a few of you have had an opportunity to read it as well. But I would like to ask Chief one or two quick questions. Chief, how does this differ from our already existing mutual aid agreement that we have, which I thought already gave our police officers the ability to provide law enforcement services throughout the county already?
Yes, Councilman Kavachi. So the current mutual aid agreement, we get, we all get sworn in as special deputy under that mutual aid agreement. It's limited in what police powers we have outside of our jurisdictional limits. Essentially, it allows us to take enforcement action in traffic violations and criminal violations that are occurring as an emergency. So it doesn't give us full police jurisdictional authority as this MOU would essentially allow us to be a member of the patrol squad that's operating at the time and to take whatever necessary enforcement actions would need to be taken.
That makes sense. And is it limited to just the county?
Correct. It would only allow us to have jurisdictional authority within Carroll County and outside of the city of Westminster municipal limits.
Great. Ms. Levin, are you on the call, correct? Mr. President, do you mind if I continue?
Certainly, please go ahead. Ms. Levin should be on the call.
I'm sorry, I just had you muted.
That's okay. Ms. Levin, just out of an abundance of caution, do you see any issues with our police officers performing regular non-emergency services outside of our corporate limits in terms of any type of liability or anything like that for the city?
Well, so presumably, under this agreement, it would all be pandemic-related. But it does provide for the distribution of liability, and there are provisions in the local government for a claims act that also govern the liability so that their liability will not be expanded by virtue of activities that they undertake pursuant to the mutual aid agreement.
Individually or for the city?
For the city. And their individual liability only kicks in where they've acted negligently and outside the scope of their impairment.
Okay, great. Just rather be safe than sorry. I thought that was the case, but I wanted to ask the question. Thank you, Mr. President. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Kavachi. Any further questions or discussion?
Mr. President, if I may.
Mr. Dayhoff.
I read it quickly, and it's put together pretty darn well. But I forget, what was the, what was the sunset on it? Ms. Levin or chief? What is the sunset on it? When does this agreement end?
So the wording on it would say when one of the parties requests to end it, and it would only be related to when this pandemic crisis is occurring.
So it's not like when the governor or the mayor rescinds our state of emergency or anything like that?
No, the city can withdraw it when it deems it appropriate to do so.
Would that require council action?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, because I, yeah, I would like, I would like to, I would like to, for the council, the mayor and council, to be kept in the loop as the, how long the agreement's in force and when it ends.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Anyone else? All right, no further discussion. The motion is to agree, as I, if I can go back to, the motion is to agree to adopt this agreement in substantially the form that it's in, authorizing the mayor and the chief of police to make such minor changes in cooperation with the other parties as they may think is necessary, and they can be agreed to, and then that will be the agreement. Do you wish to come back to you for a final agreement, or are you comfortable with just allowing the mayor to execute?
I'm comfortable the mayor executing. I agree.
Very good. In that case, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Yeah, ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the agreement is adopted as discussed. And that's for new business. It's time for departmental reports. Ms. Matthews, would you like to recognize the department heads for their reports?
Yes, thank you very much. Before moving on to the department head, Council President Pecoraro, I would like to kind of follow up on some of the comments that have been made by the mayor and common council regarding the city's operating status, and just share some information with the community that they may not be aware of yet. I think that has been mentioned, our city administrative offices were closed to the public last week. Those include our offices at 56 West Main Street, and as was noted by, I believe it was Councilmember Dayhoff, the Family Fitness Center located at 11 Longwell Avenue. I want to assure the public that the phone lines are being monitored and that city staff is available to our sister residents. As a reminder, bills can be paid online, as well as some city business can also be conducted online. One of the things I wanted to highlight is many of the phones are rolling over, not being answered directly, but rolling over to voicemail, at which time city staff who is working remotely will pick up those calls and return them. So I didn't want anyone to be concerned if they were not getting a city staff member immediately when they called. Our police department has also made some operational changes, and I'm sure Chief Ledwell may want to elaborate on this. But we have, the door leading to the police department lobby is currently locked and closed to the public. Anyone needing assistance at the police department is welcome to enter the small vestibule area just inside the front door. Communication center staff will be happy to assist anyone who comes into the police department vestibule via the intercom system. Alternatively, our residents are encouraged to call 410-848-4646 for assistance. Those wishing to make a police report in a non-emergency case can certainly continue to do so. They may wish, once again, call the police department at the number I just mentioned. In most cases, an officer will not respond in person to take a non-emergency report unless there's a pressing need in the judgment of that officer to do so. Some other changes that I wanted to mention, this is not a change that, is relative to our trash collection. There are no service changes. We are continuing to make pickups on a regular schedule for our regular trash collection. With regard to bulk pickup, which is handled by our street department, this will be the last week that we are providing bulk pickup until further notice. So anyone who has a pickup scheduled for this week will be serviced. We will not be accepting any further reservations for bulk pickup until this crisis has passed.
Ms. Matthews, I'm sorry, can we, can we please make, can we please make sure that we widely publicize that so that people are aware this is the last week?
Yes, we will certainly do that. Council President Pecoraro, you know, also as a reminder, we recently, I think it's been about a year ago, Mr. Glass can correct me if I'm mistaken in terms of the timeframe, but we did move, I believe it was last July 1st, to having people call for bulk pickup. So we do have phone numbers of anyone who might have scheduled a pickup, and our staff can assist with basically calling people just to make sure in case they don't see any public notices that they receive an individual phone call or email advising them that their pickup will not take place if it's scheduled after this week.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Kavachi.
May I ask Ms. Matthews a question about that, please?
Sure.
Ms. Matthews, so once we cut that off, well, let me back up. Where does our bulk trash currently go? Does it all go to our landfill?
I believe that is the case. Mr. Glass, am I correct in that?
Yes, that's correct.
So if this lasts, you know, a couple, one or two cycles of bulk pickup, you know, a couple of weeks, maybe a month, this point will probably be moved. But if this goes on for any lengthier period of time, I'd like to maybe consider requesting from the county that our city residents be able to take their own bulk trash out to the landfill without being charged for it. Obviously, we're, you know, part of what you pay for in city taxes is the ability to have that bulk trash picked up, and we're doing some type of agreement with the county to be able to drop that bulk trash there. And if you had an individual that wanted to take, had or needed some bulk trash to be removed and was willing to do it themselves, it would be great if we could have a way in which they could do that, take it out to the landfill, in lieu of the city doing it for them. I realize that we may not have the mechanism set up for that right now, but it might be something that's relatively easily done with a call to the county. Again, not something we probably have to do immediately, but just something to consider.
We would certainly be happy, Councilmember Kavachi, to see what we could work out if this crisis does continue, as long as many of us think it will. I did notify the mayor and council of this last week, and this should be seamless to the public, but I did just want to note that we have put in modified work schedules for city staff in the police department, as well as most of our public works divisions. Since those individuals are unable to work remotely and we need to maintain business continuity, we have, in some cases, put in some split work schedules or things just to try to protect the health of our employees so they can continue to serve the community. I think Councilmember Dayhoff mentioned many of the items that are impacting recreation and parks. Just to recap those, for the benefit of the mayor and common council and the public, any room reservations at the community room at the pool complex made through April 30th have been canceled, and we are not accepting any new reservations for that space. Similarly, we have also revoked any special event permits through April 30th and any park pavilion rentals through the same time period. In the case of the special event permits, many of those were related to city-sponsored events, and many of the other events also would have needed to be canceled under the governor's executive order. So we will be looking at any special event permits, our park pavilion rental permits in approximately three weeks, those that are reserved through the month of May, and make the best decisions we can based on the information that is available. Obviously, as many of you have noted, this is a very fast-evolving situation. To that end, I was in touch earlier this afternoon with the mayor and the council president. Chief Ledwell and I were having some discussions about our city parks. Given the rapidity with which the virus is being spread, we do feel that we should put some more severe restrictions in place regarding our parks, which up until today, we have basically kept them open and just basically tried to discourage people from gathering. After talking to the mayor and council president this afternoon, we will still maintain our parks as being open. Obviously, we can't gate our parks, but we are going to take some steps with regard to some of our fenced park amenities, such as our basketball and tennis courts. We will be locking those and keeping those closed until further notice in an attempt to keep people from congregating. We will also basically be putting up some signage regarding our pavilions and shelters and reminding people of the governor's executive order restricting any public gatherings of more than 10 people. We will also be posting signage at our skate park, indicating that that facility is closed, as well as signage to reflect the fact that playground equipment should not be used, just given the health and hygiene concerns raised by the National Institutes of Health and the fact that COVID-19 can live on certain surfaces for up to three days. So I will be working with Ms. Mollendorf and with Mr. Glass tomorrow on starting to put these restrictions in place, as well as pushing out this information through the city's customary communication channels. So before I move on to the reports from the rest of the department heads, I did just want to stop for a moment and see if the mayor and common council had any questions regarding any of the information I just outlined.
Is there any questions for Ms. Matthews on this?
Mr. President.
Mr. Kavachi.
So, Ms. Matthews, I know you said that on a lot of the parks that have gated features, we're going to try to close those off, which makes sense, because they have hard surfaces and can carry that. But we are going to keep the parks that are just open fields and things like that open. We really don't have a choice. We don't have a way to stop people from going to them anyway. I think that we ought to, when we put this information out to the public, however we do that, that we say something along the lines of, you know, until we're ordered to shelter in place, that people are allowed to go, let's say, walk at Wakefield Valley if they feel like.
We will.
Exercise, because I want to make sure that we're not, you know, the governor was pretty clear that he's saying, hey, look, he wants people to be able to go and exercise and, just don't do it with other people. And so I think.
I, sorry. I agree, Councilmember Kavachi. The language, obviously not for a sign, because it's a priority for that, that I suggested to the mayor and council president earlier today, was that city parks remain open for walking, running, bicycling, and relaxing. As always, please practice proper hygiene and social distancing. As you said, practically speaking, we cannot close off the parks. One of the things that Chief Ledwell and I discussed is, you know, we have a number of residents who, you know, basically his kids are out of school, or they've lost the ability to utilize their customary childcare services. Unlike those who live in a single-family home or a townhouse, they may not have yards to take their kids out to. So, you know, we are trying to reinforce the guidelines that are out there while also recognizing that, you know, people need to get out of their house occasionally and be able to play with their kids.
Well done. Well done.
Done. Just the last thing I want to do before turning it over to Ms. Child of our first department director report is, we moved fairly quickly, as most of you know, the middle of last week to move the majority of our administrative staff to teleworking. I would be remiss if I did not specifically name the IT staff who worked on that, all five of them. That would be Dave Davidson, our IT manager, Jeremy Brown, Josh Carbaugh, Matt Holmes, and Frank Middleton, who just did tremendous work on Tuesday to basically outfit newly-equipped laptops with VPN so that our employees who are able to work remotely could do so as quickly as possible. So I just want to give a shout out to all of them. And I also want to thank all the department directors and all the city staff. It's obviously been a fairly stressful week for all of us. I've never, you know, experienced anything like this in 30-plus years of government, and I could not be more proud of our team and all the work that they have done over the past week plus. With that, we'll start the rest of the department director reports. First up is Darlene Child.
Mr. President, I have a quick question.
Yes, Mr. Yingling.
Ms. Matthews, I want to go back to the city parks. What about the playground equipment and that? I mean, you're talking about, you're allowing children to be, you know, climbing on, I understand that, I don't think that they're gated and everything, but, I mean.
Yeah, we were going to post signage by the playground equipment, yes. Basically saying that playground equipment should not be used.
Okay, what about, the governor mentioned today about strict enforcement of the 10, you know, 10 people or less congregation rule. I mean, are we as a city prepared to enforce that? You know, if we see, you know, people gathering at the parks, or where do we stand on that? I think that's important to address.
Yeah, it's a good question, and Chief Ledwell and I have talked about that. We had a situation, what prompted my question last- We had a situation, what prompted my question last week is there was a violation by one of the restaurants in town that was hosting a private gathering of family members. That was still a violation, so that led to me asking Chief Ledwell, you know, does enforcement, who does enforcement fall to? It would be our police department. You know, certainly, I think if we had other staff who noticed it beyond our police department, you know, we're still working out some of the details. We could certainly, you know, ask them to basically encourage people to disperse. But ultimately, that would be a city enforcement matter. My hope, Councilmember Yenling, is to the extent that we can through communication channels, as well as posting signage, that certainly we can discourage people. But ultimately, that enforcement would come to the police department, who obviously has a multitude of other tasks on their hands right now. But we will try to keep an eye on the situation when they're going around regularly patrolling.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that because I know the police department has a big task, you know, but I think that we should be paying close attention to that because that is really why the governor is doing this, you know, to shutting everything down. And so I just kind of wanted to bring that up, that I understand that there's a lot of things that a lot of people have to do, but just paying attention to the, you know, people congregating, I think is a huge deal, so.
It is.
You know, so, thank you though, thank you for that information.
Thank you. Anyone else before I move on?
Yes, Mr. Dayhoff.
Yeah, I guess I, I guess I would, I guess I would rather that we take another look at bulk trash pickup. I don't know the context behind that decision. But from what I've been reading and what I've been observing, is a lot of people are using this as an opportunity to clean out their house. And I'm just kind of concerned that if we don't take bulk pickup, that that's going to, that's going to get problematic pretty quickly.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm open to hearing more about how it is that that decision was made and I could perhaps hypothesize as to how it was made. But I think, I think we're going to have problems with that.
Yeah, if I may, as I mentioned earlier, and I guess near the beginning of my report, we have split many of the crews working in the various public works divisions in half. And so this particular service impacts the street department. I know almost all of you, probably virtually every one of you, has been in the street department, knows what tight quarters it is there. You know, certainly, first and foremost, we need to be concerned about the health of our staff in all city departments, but also we need to make sure that we can continue business operations. So the street department is one of the public works divisions whose staff is working kind of a split crew that is cutting our available street department staff in half during any one week. And certainly, being relieved of bulk trash gives them a little bit more flexibility to operate. So that was the underlying premise for the decision that was made.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, and I also, just before moving on, just, I want to particularly thank the mayor and the council president for their assistance and being responsive. Obviously, we were trying last week to make a number of operational decisions fairly quickly and want to thank them for their guidance and support through all of last week. And for the rest of you, just thanks for your patience of understanding that at times we had to make decisions that we could not involve all six of you in. With that, I'd like to turn it over.
I'm sorry. I tried this time a little earlier. It's going to seem like it's not quite along the same subject lines now, but when you were talking about all the things that, you know, we're going to have to close and limit, I did want to mention there's one thing that's opening that we can use and I wanted to mention it here. And if all of you can share this in any way that you can. Ting, our internet service partner in our fiber network, has made a public Wi-Fi available and went live today in the Conway Lot, which is the lot that's next to, like, race pace kind of behind, if you look direct, you know, if you're looking directly at Johansson's, if you just keep going, that lot there off 27 where the farmer's market is in the, in the spring and summer. That is, you know, they're going to have a splash screen show up on the device cautioning people, you know, you're supposed to stay in your car, keep your distance. But for those of you, if you lose internet service or you just didn't have sufficient internet service and you need to get something done for work or for, for a college assignment or something, it is there. I doubt, there's going to be a whole lot of people there using it, but for those that need something and it's urgent, you know, being connected is important right now and that's Ting doing that all on their own. So I don't know if our IT department's been involved in that or not. If so, you know, I'm not sure what the involvement is. I know that Ting is making that available and I just wanted to, to, for those of you that don't know, just to help, help spread that around. Everyone's trying to operate with what they have right now, so.
Is that free, Mr. Mayor?
It's free, yes, sir.
Excellent.
Yeah, I also just wanted to mention, Ms. Palmer, just, our Director of Finance and Administrative Services, Tammy Palmer, just texted me to remind me that county residents did get two coupons to the landfill with their property tax bill. So that would also include city residents. So that may, depending on whether they've already used them, may address some of the concern that Councilmember Cavaci expressed about residents being able to take their sofa or whatever they have to the landfill directly.
Yes, some of us have already used them.
It's not a perfect solution, Councilmember Cavaci, I do recognize that. But we will continue working on that. So with that, Ms. Darling Child, our Director of Human Resources.
Good evening. To follow up on Ms. Matthews' comments, I wanted to thank IT for helping us with getting computers so that my staff of three, myself included, myself and staff of three, were able to telework. We're continuing to assist employees and other departments as needed. And we've actually been really busy. Once some of the day-to-day issues that are coming up now slow down, we have a lot of projects to work on, so I think we can continue to be productive. We have been getting information and clarification on the Families First Coronavirus Response Act that was signed into law on March 18th and is effective April 2nd. This law expands the FMLA. And we will be getting information out to employees on what has changed and to let them know that they should contact human resources should they have a situation come up that they would need to use the Family Medical Re. for Coronavirus. In follow-up to a previous issue, we will be emailing the new drug-free workplace alcohol policies, which will be effective on April 1st out to employees until such time as we can get print and copies out to them. Before the coronavirus situation, we were able to hold two sessions of reasonable suspicion drug and alcohol training for supervisors. And we actually had 43 supervisors of the 45 trained, so we only have two left that could not attend and will need to attend the training in the future. And the training was presented by the Local Government Insurance Trust Law Control Department. And that's all I have for this evening, thank you.
If there are no questions for Ms. Child, I'm going to call on Mark Depot, our Director of Community Planning and Development.
Hello, I too want to thank IT for all their help, particularly with, working with my staff closely so we can continue working and helping the public. Just quick updates, the Historic District Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals will not be meeting in April. The Planning Commission, however, will be meeting on April the 9th. They will be hearing Mission BBQ Site Plan, Heritage Honda Signage Plan, and Party City Signage Plan. And that completes my report.
We're going alphabetical tonight, so, Mr. Jeff Glass, our Director of Public Works.
Yes, just two items. The first one is a report on the annual paving project. We currently have two crews working. One is in the Mar Hill Court, the Furnace Hills area. The other is currently working on the west side of town on Winter Streets and Kemper Avenue. Prior to that, we had, it was only one crew working and they were working on Union Street, which is also complete as we speak. The second item to talk about is our construction projects. The good news is that we are compliant as related to Governor Hogan's recent order. So all that stuff is still a go and, you know, until, until things will change. Hopefully, they won't, but in the event they do, we'll be ready to roll with those punches as well. But as we speak, all of our construction projects are a go. And that's what, that concludes my report unless there are questions.
I had a question for Mr. Depot that I didn't speak up fast enough for. The meetings that are being held that are, that are under your department, like Planning and zoning and so forth, are they being held in person? What's the plan with that and what are our options?
And Ms. Matthews can, can correct me, but my understanding is we're going to operate just like the mayor and common council and have these meetings online.
Okay, good.
That is, yeah, that is correct. We did notice the, to the public last week that all city public meetings would be held virtually and encouraged everyone to refer to the meeting agenda for instructions. The public will be able to participate in those meetings just as they're able to tonight.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure, obviously, we want to keep all our volunteers as safe as possible.
Yes. Chief Ledwell, our Chief of Police, is up next.
Good. I'm Ledwell again, Police Department. So, at the county level, the Emergency Operations Center is at a partial activation level, which means that we have twice daily conference calls. It's virtually staffed and we discuss the latest status of this COVID-19 crisis. We're coordinating efforts to make sure that we're providing continuity of services and we're addressing the needs related to this issue. As far as the police department goes, we activated our emergency mobilization plan to alert status, which means that our officers are required to be prepared to respond in an hour's notice. We did freeze all non-sick leave requests for the time being. We activated our pandemic influenza response general order, which essentially mirrors preparedness level that is along the lines of what we would do for this particular virus. We participated in an urgent webinar at 5:00 PM today that the governor's office held through the Maryland Joint Operations Center, discussing the latest elements of the governor's order and how they're going to capture data related to compliance to this order, getting into specific questions about particular businesses that may or may not be considered essential under the order. And there is a document that was produced through the legal department at the state level that outlines all the different categories of businesses and what's considered essential and non-essential. And we provided access to that document. Our dispatchers are fielding a lot of phone calls from businesses and individuals with questions related to this issue. So we provided them with that list and we provided it to all of our sworn personnel also. As was brought up earlier, the local law enforcement agencies are the ones that are being tasked with enforcement of the restrictions under the governor's order. And he's made it pretty clear that this is a priority for him. Obviously, our goal is compliance. We're not looking to go out and take enforcement action that we don't need to take. And so far, we haven't had any issues. We've had some groups that we've had congregating in certain areas of the park that we've had to disperse because it's been over 10 people. We did have that one citizen-generated call for service about a local business that was handled without issue. And we've had a couple of other related types of calls for service. So we are responsible for doing that and we've made sure that our staff has procedure in place so that everything's vetted and we've got the ability, the state's attorney has provided us with a cellular telephone contact at 24 hours a day that we can ask questions if we have any questions and get advice as far as enforceability goes. So we've got good plans in place for that. The Maryland State Police are operating the Joint Operations Center 24 hours a day and they provided us with a resource folder there that gives us a lot of good information about all the latest issues surrounding the COVID-19 crisis and anything that we need as far as a person, point of contact for any questions. As Ms. Matthews talked about earlier, we did implement and we've put on our social media the fact that most agencies are going to try to do a telephonic reporting for any calls for service that meet the criteria that allows to do that. That doesn't mean that, that we're not still going out on a lot of our calls for service in person. We are. And we've made certain modifications as far as what we're selecting to do to minimize our exposure and to minimize the public's exposure just in line with the social distancing philosophy. But we're still having to do our jobs and we're continuing to do that. We're assuming, we're assuring our continuity of operations, as Ms. Matthews mentioned earlier, by doing several things, like we've split our command staff so that we have half working here and either half teleworking or they're covering different days of the week so that if, if the virus does spread throughout the agency, that hopefully we all don't go down at once and we'll be able to continue with our operations. And we've done the same thing with our detective staff, so we'll continue with that. We're working with county citizens services. They're setting up a two-times-a-week food distribution through Carroll Food Sunday at East Middle School. So we're helping them with some security and traffic logistical issues for that. The MPTC did close their police academy, so we do have our four recruits here doing some work at police headquarters. It's indefinite, we don't know when they'll reopen. They've completed 11 weeks out of the 30-week academy. So like, like a lot of things right now, it's up in the air as to where this is going to go and we're waiting to hear on that. We've got our lateral hire, James O'Brien, he's doing very well in field training and we're pretty confident that he's going to be hitting the ground running as an independent police officer here shortly. As far as our outreach efforts go, we're coordinating with the city and trying to provide information through our social media outlets. And we're providing a unified message that comes down from the CDC, the Maryland Department of Health, the county health department, who is the lead agency on the incident command for this particular incident. So we're continuing to push that out and making, making sure that we're sending out a unified message. So we've got a lot of things underway and we put things in place here in the police department to make sure we're keeping things clean and disinfected the best that we can, providing our personnel with the personal protective equipment that they need to safely do their job and feel confident and safe out on the street. And we're practicing some social distancing within the department here too, to make sure that we're not going to spread it to one another. So we're doing all that and we're going to continue to stay up to date to provide the information to the mayor and council as we get it and make sure that we're successful in pursuing through this crisis. That's it.
Are there any questions for the chief before we move on? If not, next up is Heather Mollendor, our Director of Recreation and Parks.
Hi there, this is Heather Mollendor with Recreation and Parks. I just wanted to echo what Councilman Dayhoff had said earlier, and that is that we have canceled our April events in response to the COVID-19. The two events that this affects is our traditional egg hunt that is held on April 4th and the Westminster Wine Shroal that was to be held on April 25th. So I just ask that you stay tuned to our Facebook page, the Recreation and Parks Facebook page, for up-to-date information regarding future events, our parks and facilities. And to echo what Ms. Matthews has said earlier, the public can still reach Recreation and Parks by phone on the 410-751-5501 line. And we are taking phone calls Monday through Friday from 8:30 AM to 4:00 PM. And that is all that I have.
Thank you, Ms. Mollendor. Ms. Tammy Palmer, our Director of Finance and Administrative Services.
Good evening, everyone. This is going to sound very repetitive at this point, but being their director, I have to give a shout out to technology. There are five gentlemen in that department that went over and above last week. They deployed 25 laptops in a day and a half and trained more than 25 employees on VPNs and Office 360. VPN and Office 365. I alone kept them busy just with changing phone trees and creating group voicemails or group email boxes so that in case we had employees that went down ill, that we would have multiple employees receiving notifications. They deserve a great big shout out for their dedication, their innovation, and their hard work. They literally were in every milking cranny of 56 West with a pop-up assembly line on Tuesday and Wednesday. It was pretty amazing to see and to watch, and I appreciate everything that they did for us. They continue to support our remote users, of which we have a lot more now than we used to. You know, folks are getting used to working in a new atmosphere and in a new place and new physical location, and so as little nuances break out, we're responding to those as, as quickly as we can. This meeting is just an example of that. Until tonight, we weren't holding virtual meetings, and so this is a little bit of how our new normal looks for us, and everybody's adapting very well, I think. So at this time, most of technology is working off-site. Dave Davidson is still reporting to handle onsite hardware failures as needed. Most of our finance staff are also off-site. Myself and Shirley Hamp are still reporting into the office. Shirley's taking deliveries, answering phones, and distributing mail as well as processing payments. Most of our other processes are being handled through email off-site. However, we do anticipate that there are some high-level processes that will need to be performed on site because we're experiencing low processing speeds at our remote locations. So for instance, I'll give you an example. We can enter most of the time cards from home for payroll, but when you need to push the button to tell the computer to process and do all those calculations, that's not working well at home, and so we expect to cycle staff in as needed. We will also practice social distancing on the days that folks come in to either, you know, calculate water bills or process payroll. We expect Shirley and myself to move off-site on those days so that they have the offices to themselves. We've set up wipes and all types of cleaning supplies so that no matter who shows up on site for that particular day, that they are capable of wiping everything down and starting with a fresh, clean surface. So we're doing everything we can to maintain all operations as normal. Mr. Glass mentioned that our construction projects are moving forward. I am so, so very happy to let you know that I was able to confirm today that even though most state offices are working remotely, both Bay Restoration Grants and state revolving loan funds are being reimbursed. So that's a, that's a huge thing for us because if we were going to continue paying the contractor, we were not going to be able to be reimbursed for that until a later date. At this time, they are still processing payments. I continue to work on the budget and the financial reports when not dealing with operational changes as a result of the COVID-19. We will continue to work on strategies for emerging possibilities like widespread illness or lack of recording staff. That's all I have, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Mr. President? Mr. Cavachi. First, Ms. Palmer, I love how upbeat you sounded in that report. That's awesome. It's nice to hear a little bit of positivity there. That was great, especially coming from our finance director. One of the things I wanted to throw out there is if, if you guys get into a situation, because I know you don't live right in town, and I'm not sure many of your staff members do either, if you could literally just someone to go into the office to activate something. I mean, I live two, three blocks away from the city offices, so I'd be happy to do that if you got into a jam as things progress and just run over there and click a few buttons that I'm sure you could tell me over the phone to do. So just wanted to throw that out there, that I'd hate to see somebody make a trip in from Tawny Town, you know, or somewhere just to push a button on a machine at 56.
Well, thank you. Actually, we're all cross-trained, and we're, those are some of the things that we're dealing with now is that, you know, if the, if the process can be completed 99% off-site, and it's just a matter of saying, hey, Tammy, can you push the calculate button? I'm going to push the calculate button for them, and we'll, we'll handle it from there. But yeah, we are actually just working with cycling on and off as a result of giving some people a break to get out of the office, too.
Okay. If there's no other questions for Ms. Palmer, next up is Cindy Valencisi, our Director of Housing Services.
Can I ask a question first?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
It's okay.
It's okay. Ms. Palmer, I assume that we're keeping track of our expenses that very well may qualify for reimbursement at a later point in time if such reimbursements might be available from the state or from the federal government?
Yes. Chief Ledwell's team is currently leading the FEMA grant package that we expect most of our expenses will qualify. We won't get 100% reimbursement, we'll get some percentage, but I expect that most of the hardware and software costs will qualify.
And for our extra expenses with our IT team, I think that's what you just said. Okay, well, that's good.
Yes.
That's going to be really important down the road. Thanks for all your work. I super appreciate it. And I, I'll echo what Councilman Cavachi said. I mean, I, I live right around the corner from the city offices, so if you ever need any help with anything, I'll be more than happy to, to help out with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Ms. Valencisi?
Good evening. Just wanted to give you an update with the Housing Department. We've just been adjusting like everyone else to the daily changes, just trying to maintain the minimum requirements related to the HUD regulations, and we do have some staff working from home. They're switching off and coming into the office to pick up additional work as needed. And I did want to thank the Director of Recreation and Parks, Abby. She donated a bunch of wipes, Clarks wipes, and hand sanitizers and all that stuff to the 56 building, and I thought that was really nice, and just wanted to thank her for that. And that's all I have to report.
Are there any questions from anyone? Okay, if not, certainly, last but not least, our Councilmember Dayhoff, who will be providing the report for the Westminster Volunteer Fire Department.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. As, as a part of my report for the Fire Department, I've been assigned to the Emergency Operations Center, Joint Information Center, and that's required some periodic briefings, and in that capacity, I want to thank the Chief, Chief Ledwell and his folks have been extremely helpful with various questions that have come up, and no one's mentioned really the Health Department, and I got to tell you, Maggie Koontz and Ed Singer and Richard Brace and those folks over at the Carroll County Health Department, which is the lead agency according to incident management with this incident, they've done an incredibly good job of helping out with the Fire Department and with some other questions that have come up. So I just wanted to make sure that we mentioned those folks. For the Fire Department, on behalf of the President, Danny Plunkard, and Chief Jason Tyler, and EMS Captain Laura Tyler, our call volume is down a little bit as a result of, of the recent activities. However, we, we maintain a concern about keeping up with our personal protection equipment as, as many folks are, are very much worried about that. You may see a term out there in the public coming soon. It's a, it's a PUI. A PUI is a person that is under investigation for possibly having the COVID-19 virus, and that requires a full suit-up of personal protection equipment, and we've had a number of those calls. As far as the report for the month of February, we had 540 calls, we had 447 EMS calls, 93 fire calls. Let's see, it looks like 288 of those calls were in the city, 230 were in our first due area just outside of the city. The number of overlapping calls, which I've called to the mayor and council's attention in the past, which is a troublesome statistic, that these are, 53% of the calls that we get, we have all of our pieces of equipment and all of our crews deployed, and we have to bring in folks from New Windsor and, and Reese and Pleasant Valley to help us out, and they do a wonderful job for us, but that continues to be a statistic that bothers all of us. Busiest day of the week was Thursday. Busiest alarm time is at 9 o'clock in the morning these days, which is a little bit of a shift. So again, I want to thank the, the lead agency, the Health Department, for, for how helpful they've been. Ed Singer and Maggie Koontz and Richard Brace, they've been available 24/7 to help us out with various questions that have come up, and I think by working together, we're going to get through this just fine. Thank you, Ms. Matthews.
Thank you. I believe that concludes staff's reports, unless there's any questions from the mayor and common council.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Matthews, and thanks to all of our staff for continuing to, to do everything they can from their homes or their offices when they can get in. We're keeping the government performing for the citizens exactly as they would want us to, so that's, that's critical. Now is the time on our agenda when we usually have citizen comments, where we invite the public to address the mayor and common council on any issues that pertain to tonight's agenda or any other city issues. Unfortunately, we can't do that the way we normally do in the council chamber and listen to people live. We have been monitoring our Facebook page. I haven't seen any, any real questions that have been posted on there yet, but that's what we'll be using in the future. We will also be able to take people's questions or comments through an email, and we're going to keep the record open until close of business tomorrow to allow people to get any questions or comments they want to make available to the mayor and council, to us, and they can do that by writing to our city clerk, Shannon Viscosky, at S-V-I-S-O-C-S-K-Y at westgov.com, and I'll read that again. It's S-V-I-S-O-C-S-K-Y at westgov.com, or they can call her office at 848-4938 and leave a message for the mayor and council, and we would like to hear from the public throughout the duration of this situation. I want to note that we will continue to host these virtual meetings until we can return to City Hall and our, you know, our physical meetings. The mayor and council believe that it's important to preserve these, these meetings as an important hallmark of civil government throughout the emergency, to make sure that people know that their, their city government deal is still working and their elected representatives are still on the job working for them and participating in this decision-making. So unless, Ms. Viscosky, you have received any comments that we need to advise of right now, I'll ask my colleagues one last time if they have anything else we need to add, and if not, then I will declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much for coming, and we will see you all for the next regular meeting of the mayor and council. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.